It is 6:30. I'll call a meeting to order. First thing is the additions and deletions. I've noted the only addition we have is a resignation from the Recreation Committee. I'll probably take that right along with item eight with the Brooklyn planning and the tax appointments. The select board minutes from October 18th, do I have a motion? Second to discuss?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of October 18th, 2020, 21.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Anything that we need to add, delete, questions, any inaccuracies? Hearing none, I'll move the question on favor of the October 18th minute. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? The minutes from October 27th, do I have a motion? Second to discuss?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of October 27th, 2021.
Second.
Do we have any commentaries? That was the meeting that we had, the interviews and the executive. Hearing none, I'll move the question on favor of the minutes of October 27th. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? The pay orders for tomorrow, currently we're looking at $1,640,149.23. Do I have a motion? Second to discuss?
I make a motion to accept the pay orders of November 2nd, 2021 in the amount of $1,640,149.23.
Second.
Do we have any corrections, alterations, anything anybody needs to discuss? I would just note that we did have the million and a half that went to Mill River Unified School in this pay order. That was a big portion of this. Any other commentary?
I got one. Lori rounding reimbursement for four tapes, was that, what was that for?
For the rec program.
Oh, for the rec. Lori was the director of the rec program this summer. She ran it and Lisa Katrubi helped set it up. I basically said that Lori ran the program and Lisa helped get the program set up.
That's all I have.
Do we have anything else? Hearing none, I'll move the question on the pay orders for tomorrow, November 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Road Commissioner reports.
Well, not too much to talk about having the room for much, but. I do, I talked to Sandy earlier today on the little paving project I did. I did the bolt around the mobile station, that hole there, I did the one down on River Street, just past Town Garage, and the one on the crick. Road bridge where we dug it out, recessed the plate in, in place. The materials that came from Wilk paving over two different days, it was five ton of mix. It was supposed to go under my account, but it didn't. It ended up on the town's account. So, what I came to Sandy and also Julie today was, is I wanted to find out how they wanted me to bill this out because I had some time and labor digging and cutting on that bridge with my machinery and billing the town for my time and labor or just doing something with the swapping of the hot mix as a wash is about what it amounted to. They also owed me for some money for some hay that they got for doing some grant work up on Sugar Hill. So, I went home, looked at it, and it all comes out to about a wash. The hot mix is $61 roughly a ton. I called Wilks, they haven't even sent a bill, they couldn't find a bill on it. So, I presume they'll get one sooner or later for the town. So, it was roughly around $300 for the materials through Pike or Wilk that we used for the hot mix to patch the three holes. My question to the board is, do you want me to bill my time and labor and then you charge me for the hot mix or do we want to just call it a wash? I don't know how you want to do this. Because like I said, the mix was supposed to go in my name anyways. Do they need a paper trail for everything done here?
Julie said, Julie, he talked to, Phil talked to Julie. She said the wash sounds fine with her. She just needs your approval.
Does that sound okay to you?
Sounds okay. Julie said.
Okay. Julie's asking, Phil's asking, I'm asking.
That's good. I'll just fill fire district, boil, maybe oil, leave the others.
Okay.
Yep. Sounds good.
Other than that, I talked to Sandy today about the salt shed down there. If you look behind the original sand shed that's there now, there's about a 30 by 50 foot, the width of the sand shed that's there, that's just full of junk. Old culverts, an old sander, miscellaneous plows, just junk. My thought was to the board, and not sure how to go about this, talking to Sandy earlier, is cleaning that out, extending the original roof line as we have now of that sand shed out another approximately 30 feet by the 50 feet, get some trusses, putting cement blocks from Carreras or wherever around three sides to separate it, make a U, so they could back straight in instead of having to dump and try to push into that little narrow shed, just dump and push sideways right into a double wide shed. You'd have one post in the middle. Then you could get your salt undercover, more than one load. You might be able to get two or three load in during the fall when it's dry instead of trying to do it in the winter time. Just like Sandy and I talked about, we just don't know what we need to do for the state for permitting on it. I have no idea what the town is going to request. It's their property. I don't think we're really changing any footprint much other than turning the salt shed, making it a little bigger. I think it's one of the easier ways out.
Is that, is that what you said about the clearance and everything on the salt shed? Let's see if I can find the paperwork on it. Because you said there's some stuff of what needs to happen if it's fully enclosed or partially enclosed. And does that go along with Phil's idea here?
It will be opened on one side so the water can flow in and flow out. I don't know, I read that too, and I don't know exactly what that does mean. I don't care what kind of building you put down there. It's just like when the Town Garage, when Irene hit, there was four feet of water in the floor. I don't think you're going to put anything in there that's not going to get wet. I think they're looking primarily more for runoff during this, you know, year and normal rain through salt and stuff that way, through, you know, roof runoff carrying it away. I think that's what they're more worried about than floods because, I'm not sure. I think when they got floods come through like that, there's going to be other issues. They're going to be more worried about than a little salt damage. But I'm just, I was just bringing it up to the board so maybe we could start thinking about going that route or doing something that way, utilizing that area back there, getting another salt shed going, and not really change the outlook or the overall of the design down there.
You have almost the last paragraph of this letter that Sandy gave us tonight here.
From the flood planning manager.
Yeah, it says basically that if it's not fully enclosed, if it only has two or three walls, then it is essentially wet flood, flood proofed, and may not have to meet the one foot above BFE requirement, provided it's designed for that of the drainage. And then he goes on to say, Cal goes on to say, meeting the one foot above BFA appears would be relative from sample pitch here, the existing ground elevation look to be within the foot. But you need a, you need a survey to document this. So, what exactly are we looking at with, I mean, it sounds like it might be the solution we're looking for. What next steps do we need to take?
About raising that up?
I don't know.
I think if you had to raise that up, you'd have to raise it at least four or five feet. So, what would happen is everything would drain towards your garage.
How is saying, it looks like it's just about where it needs to be now anyways?
Yeah, this, I don't think there's a lot of elevation changing you can do there. Because it, you're going to tip the whole scenario so it runs towards your garage.
Yeah, I don't think Paul's saying it really has to raise it. He thinks that it's right now, within that requirement.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what, you'd have to shoot some grades and see what their elevations are. They have a benchmark for that. And I, I think when they built that rescue, isn't that above, they set that above flood plate? That's how much it'd have to be filled? I think that's what the elevation is, if I remember right. I can't, I remember we filled a lot of that that year when we did that.
I'm, I'm not really picturing what, what you're looking at for altering. You said a 30 foot?
I did measure them from the back, this original sand shed that's there now, to the toe of the slope which is the railroad trestle, tracks. There's 30 feet wide there. And if you made a, just extended that roof line, the width of the sand shed that's there, and had the door come in from the north side instead of, like they're doing it from the west, so they could push your salt in, you'd have, you'd have roll blocks that separates the salt from the sand, roll blocks on the south side and the east side, be west, south, and east. And then you could, you'd have a box where you could push your salt in, it wouldn't flow out. And then go from there with your roof line.
Would you be closing over towards where the fuel pump in that area is in there? You wouldn't, you wouldn't like that?
The only thing you'd be doing is extending the roof line of the sand shed that's there now. Putting what, maybe six more trusses on it, two foot on sand, maybe a little more now, probably. And I think those are four foot and center. You'd need to save 10 more trusses and then put your post up for the, like they have there now.
And Phil, what kind of floor is there now? Is it concrete or is it earth or?
Be dirt.
Be dirt, okay.
I see no reason to put concrete down on that. Because salt's going to eat the concrete.
I just didn't, yeah, I just didn't know what was there right now, so.
Well, it'd have to be dug out and re-based because this is basically just mud there now.
So, I assume, I assume that we've completely ruled out the Pike area then?
I don't know that. I don't know where that stands. Like I said, I've been gone for 10 days.
I don't, I don't think any of us really know where it stands. The, really a lot of questions of trying to do it go over there. Particularly after I see the email from the, the state guy who's pretty much in charge of that type of thing. He's got, I think, four or five different actual sections of state law that have to be complied with to do anything over there. I know I've kind of considered it a lost cause and I think we have to stay in-house if we're aware. It didn't seem to me it would be practical to be over there anyway because then you're going to have to be driving the loader over to get salt and then bringing the loader back to get sand and I just.
It's as much nicer if you keep everything close to the hand, that's for sure.
And it sounded, the solution you're giving us would be practical. It seems like the, the best solution with the least amount of toil.
With, with what you're looking at, I know one of the things that Steve was hoping for was that he'd get some room to keep some of the equipment when it's not being used. You know, like some of the plows and stuff in the summertime. Is what you're looking at going to allow you some space to perhaps move that stuff?
Stop on your power, yes.
I know in the winter time we've got some equipment that we don't use. Same thing to store.
My theory, I don't know how the state looks at it now, but it's, we're not changing any elevations of anything for salt. You're just putting a roof over, a bigger roof over a section. That's it. That's all I can see. But I don't know how the state looks at that.
It looks like the comment that we got, that as long as it's not fully enclosed, becomes a big problem if it's fully enclosed, then you've got to meet all these requirements. But if you're only doing two or three walls, it meets the requirement for being wet flood proofed.
Well, that's, that's a scenario. When it floods, it's going to flood. So is everything else down there?
Oh, yes.
The one thing I think we need to look at is the trusses that exist in the, in the sand shed now. Appears that some of them need to be repaired.
These some are tender.
Would, would it be possible to do that, to get the ones that are tendered? A little bit more shorter?
Yeah, probably when they build that, they'll be tied all together.
Who's talking about, would we still possibly, or is that something if we need to fill the drop, the numbers on it?
Yeah, we can at least see for eligible.
It is, what you're looking at there is there's maybe a chance that yours, you and Steve could get together maybe sometime this week and get that to Sandy. So, we have an idea of what, what we're really looking at with that kind of an addition. She, she's going to be able to get that off to the guy that she's been dealing with from the state. And he's going to see what possibly could be done either this year or next year on the grant application.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I will see you.
Okay, sounds good.
I would just make a note too, and you're aware, that I did sign the contract for Carr, Carr Gill. There was quite a difference in the price range on it. I think it was $8 for one and like $17 from the other bid. And you're aware that the additional work they did up there on that header in the center?
Miranda.
Oh, yeah, the additional work, they did finish that.
Do you have anything else you'd like?
No, I'm, I'm good. I don't have anything right now.
Are you going to be able to get some blocks over in the ball field to block up where the fence was torn down? Jersey barriers or something?
For, where do you want one of those?
Where that is torn down.
Fence was vandalized.
Oh, I didn't know that. I got one today.
There's a huge section of fence that was torn down.
I can take a look at.
By the pump house. The guys need to bring it over to the transfer station because it's a goner. And we need to get some barriers up so people don't drive on the ball field.
Okay.
Steve was hoping to get from Pike, but that's not going to work.
Okay, all right. Let me talk to the city owner there. I'll see, I'll stop if he's in a little while.
Do you know what they cost, those barriers? I know we don't have any.
They're two way, two way six or $8.80 or $8.35 basically per hertz.
I assume that, where, where do you get them, curds?
Yeah, curds.
I assume just bill them right to the town then? Has anybody mentioned that leaf blower too?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, somebody, I didn't see any before I left. The one on the cargo machine. I have not seen the specs on that.
There was also a brand on that, was it? Is there a headlining this again?
Uh, we have to get in, well, sooner the better, but early November would be great.
Now, is this the same thing that the town did?
This is a, it's a, the equipment grant through RNCME.
Okay, this is a tow behind one. They've got a Skidsteer.
Well, this is the one that Charlie Callman was doing, what they want. It's like $8,000 and the grant pays 80% of a $7,000 purchase, so about 50, it's like 51.60.
It was like six.
I just can't think of it works. I knew you said that November had to be a, the.
This first weekend, November would be better. It's kind of first come, first served, so the sooner the better.
Would be liable for about 1,600?
No, 56. We're going to be.
26 or 27, I wonder.
So, they're, they would pay 5,600. The grant's going to pay about 5,600 of whatever that price is, 8,000. So, we're going to be around, yeah, you said 2,600, yeah.
It's like 2,600 our share if we do it. Phil, you, you haven't really had time to think about it, but just off the top of your head, do you really think this is a practical thing? You can't, you can't legally blow leaves into the road, will you?
You can't blow it over.
And you can't. And if you blow it onto somebody's land, they're not going to be happy, you know? I just, I got some doubts about this, I don't know.
I saw Town of Timoths use this, they've got one on a Skidsteer, presumed the same thing, except hydroelectricated. And they blew it, the leaves, they were doing the long run coming down Cobb Hill towards the old Blue Flare. And they blew the leaves out in the, up the bank, and within two days, it all blown right back down in, were in the ditch again. I'm not sure if they, they're using this primarily, the purpose of this is for blowing leaves off a road for grading in the fall, but it puts them all in the ditch line. So, you don't have leaves while you grade. That's the primary use for these debris blowers. I was just trying to look and see what the, this doesn't have a volume size on it. Because when, I didn't know it till a few weeks ago, I was researching some other blowers and they do them in Newtons, the volume of foot pounds in Newtons for airflow. And I'm just curious what this one was. It doesn't really say how much it actually blows. Gives you a lot of specs on the motors and the other stuff. It's definitely got its pros and cons. I just don't know. If you were doing a lot of field area, it'd probably be really good. But I'm not sure in our application in the roads if it's going to be a good thing or not. One thing about it, you're not going to get a lot of money tied up into it to find out. It's just. Did they talk to Town of Timoths? Who else has one in the?
Clarnin.
They do? Do they use a lot?
Yeah, Clarnin, Clarnin's in the demonstration running around too if they really like.
Now, is there a tow behind or is it a hydraulically driven one on their Skidsteer? It looks just like this?
I think it's something that attaches to one of our pieces of equipment.
I could see where this being a tow behind might be an issue, but.
It attaches to one of our pieces of equipment. I took that from Steve.
Yeah, it just sits on a set of forks, on a skin, and then drives along you have. That'd be fine. I could see where that would be used. You could utilize it more.
If you're convenient, the literature, that was an option. But it's a nutritional expense too.
Because, like you said, Town of Timoths is on a quick attached plane. They drive up to it, they put the two hoses on their Skidsteer, which we can do with our front end, or you don't have to buy the motor assembly or anything. You just buy a hydroelectricated blower.
If you talk to Steve, he gets back to us at the next meeting. Does that give you enough time to do the grant?
I mean, it's the first come, first served. It's whatever, however long the money would.
What about if we approve it and have Phil and Steve get together as quickly as they can and see whether they want to go ahead with the purchase and leave the actual decision to them? We approve the purchase now? That would, that would leave it to Steve and Phil whether to actually make the purchase and they could do it too sweet or quick, quick on it.
So, is Sandy then going to explore writing up the grant or?
Well, yeah, that would facilitate getting Sandy in with the grant. If both Phil and Steve agree that it's a wise purchase. But that would give them at least tools like tomorrow or whatever.
Got you, so within the week.
To make a decision without waiting two weeks or maybe. Would that work with you, Phil?
Personally, I'm, I'm here this week and gone next. But I am working with Town of Timoths either tomorrow afternoon or Tuesday or Wednesday. So, I won't be in touch with them and find out how they like theirs still.
Rosie, you in agreement?
Yes. Is it really something that you feel is beneficial for us or are you iffy on it?
If, if, that's a judgment. I really have to talk to somebody on this first because.
Maybe if you talk to Clarnin as well.
Well, yeah, I talked to Cash on it, but I can, I'll talk to Mr. Buffal on it tomorrow. Find out whether, what they think about theirs. Because get multiple reviews on it. I, it, it's definitely got its pros, but I can see a lot of backlash to it too. You know, it's not, like you say, it's blowing leaves around and not getting anywhere so.
Well, I think you just have to pull them around. They got to go somewhere near the end of the road or somebody's land and then. I don't know. I just, I got a lot of concerns about it. Just because it's a grant doesn't mean we have to jump at it.
Well, if you, if you, you know, tie some people into trust and.
Yeah, I'll look into it for the holidays.
But is it beneficial for the type of roads we have? I mean, Longford has.
Well, we're good to get the leaves off of someone who's graded in the spring or fall. That would be one thing that would be advantageous, but as far as cleaning digits with it, I don't see where it's going to work well.
I don't either.
That's what they make machines for.
I'll leave it to you to investigate that.
I'll look into it, but they'll get back to for a decision today.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Public comments. Carol?
I guess that's me. I'm a public comment. I have a couple of conundrums about the Ursa grant. The first one is the more important one. They asked for an insurance certificate and they specify that it's from the vendor. When I saw that, I said, oh God, that would be one of the contractors we talk to once you guys choose which one it is. But I figured I should pass this along. So, Shannon Pitlick is helping me with the grant now. And I showed it to her and she said, oh no. And then she read it and she said, you know, I think, I think it is the contractor. And then this morning she thought about it and contacted a friend of hers who used to work at Forest Parks and Recreation. And, well, she tried to get Sherry Winnie first, who is the person in charge of the grant at FPI. And the person she talked to used to work at Forest Parks and Recreation. And she said, no, what they're asking for is the town's insurance policy. And when, and if you're given the grant, then they will ask for the contractors. Just to make sure, since this person doesn't work there anymore.
Right.
I, um, there was an email address for questions, so I sent off a little note asking that question. Is a vendor the town, is a vendor the contractor, is it both, what do you need? And I have not heard anything back from that. But I'm leaning towards the fact that it's probably the town that has to supply the insurance certificate.
When did you send your email?
I'm sorry?
When did you send your email?
I sent it at about ten o'clock, eleven o'clock this morning.
This morning, so it's just been, it hasn't even been a day since?
It hasn't even been a day.
Okay.
So I can wait to hear. But I, I figured you guys know more about those kinds of requests than I do. Would you consider it to be something that the town has to submit? A certificate of insurance with all sorts of liability?
Yeah, we need that from BLCT.
Well, unless I hear back from these people, I'm gonna assume that. But I need something like that to add to the grant, no later. The grant is due the twenty ninth of November, no later than five o'clock in the evening.
Okay.
So if you could get it to me, you know, at least a week before, I can add it to the grant.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to talk about because I thought the vendor was the contractor is, um, I and one other person on the Conservation Commission walked around Stone Meadow with two contractors showing them what wanted, what needed to be done. I have received two quotes, one from each one. Should I give those to Sandy now or wait until we see if we get the grant?
Are you gonna get any more quotes?
I'm sorry?
Are you, are you going to reach out for any more quotes?
No, those are the two.
Okay.
They're both local and they are within a hundred dollars of each other, so. Anyway, that's all I guess I have to say, unless you have any comments on what I just reported. I'm basically gonna do nothing.
Congratulations on getting through round one.
I'm sorry?
Congratulations on getting through round one.
Thank you. I am never doing this again, no, I told Sandy that twenty times.
Is it one's enough, huh?
Yeah. I, I don't think I'm a professional grant writer. I'm glad I have Shannon working with me because she's, she has a lot of contacts and knows the ropes. Except she thought vendor meant the same thing I thought vendor means. Anyway, that's all, unless you have.
How much was her grant actually, fourteen thousand?
It's about thirty thousand, right?
We asked for thirty thousand, the quotes all came in at, um, within a hundred and fifty dollars or so of one another at twenty six.
Okay.
And I will put, I will give the correct estimates, but I will tell them that I have added monies because I'm afraid that any materials they need to buy might be more expensive by next April or May when they're gonna do the work if we get the grant.
Were you gonna ask about the purchasing policy?
I'm sorry?
Were you gonna ask about the purchasing policy? The purchasing policy?
Oh, yeah, the purchasing policy, yes, thank you.
Sure.
Um. Does the purchasing policy apply to this grant?
I don't see that the policy in itself actually covers grant work. Uh, it's pretty clear that if, where the town, select board going through all of this, you're actually a committee of the town.
That's correct.
So indirectly, it is the town that's going for the grant. I don't see in the policy, I don't see in the policy, what we would actually looking at dollar wise on thirty thousand dollars would probably be normally around twenty percent. That would still put us in the big ticket item. The one thing the policy does say is that the select board can, basically by articulating a reason why we're not going by the policy, can go ahead and make, um, some decisions financially. I think that the town will probably be in favor of going ahead with the grant. I think part of it's gonna come from the feedback of whether we get the grant or not.
Yes.
Uh, certainly if we were doing a project on our own, it would definitely fall under the policy. Uh, unless they, somebody else is reading the policy very different than I am. I think you're probably gonna be within the limits of what we can do. Uh, you saw it out to, it refers directly to two or more, uh, and you have those two.
Mm-huh.
We're not following the formal bid by putting them in the newspaper.
Right.
It is a specialized, um, contract, it's not something that, um, the guy over on Lake Road that does this, or the fellow up on Creek Road that does it. These are companies that actually do trail improvements, uh, similar to what they've done up in Killington. And I think therefore, at that point, considering that, that we are within that margin, that we can authorize you to go ahead without going through a purchasing policy on it.
Okay, that's great.
Are these funds from the grant, are they federally funded or is it state?
I am not sure whether it comes from the federal government or, I have a feeling it probably.
I'm not sure it's a real big deal, but we do have a little paragraph in our bidding policy on federally funded purchases. But even with that requirement, it says you have to get rate quotes between two or more qualified and you, you meet that criteria. So I don't think it's a big worry, I just wonder.
Okay, all right, so.
Ultimately, the board should be the one that makes the decision who does it though.
Yes. Uh, and I think this thing on federally funded purchases is within our policy, our town policy on bidding. I don't think we have to worry about it. Not from what I read in the policy.
I agree, I was reading that part particularly there.
Yeah.
As far as I can see with many kind of policy, and I think most probably this is coming through the state.
Yeah, and I would agree with you.
So we're secondary.
Rose, that's just what I wanted to say.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad Sandy's here to remind me, you know, what to talk about.
The annual town report.
Good evening. I'm just saying good evening to her.
Um, Sandy puts us pretty well into our memo. I think everybody here has been resident long enough, so we've gone through both kinds of town reports. Uh, we've had a couple of years where basically the citizens got the part of the report in their mail, it's an abbreviated one. That basically spells out the budget that we've come up with. And there's not a lot of other things in that mailing. And then they had a number of copies of the full report here in the town office. Where if the person wanted the information on the, uh, the organizations and the sheriff's report and those items, they could come in and get the full report. Myself, over the years, I go back way to when I was a kid. I can remember mom and dad getting the town report in the mail. Uh, it had everything from vital statistics, births, marriages, uh, civil unions, how much was being spent, the budget, of course. Uh, and each of the organizations had a blurb in there in reference to their community activities, that type of thing. I know one of my better ones that I like is I still have the one from the year I was born. And who else in town was born that same year and who got married that year and is no longer with us and. I've always felt that everybody in town, when they go to town meeting, they should have had a chance to look at that. Many people won't go to town meeting. To me, that's all information that people in town are interested in and I think they should be able to access it, hang on to it. In twenty five years, fellow gets married, you can look back and say, this is the year I was born, here's my mom and dad's and. Honestly, to me, it's just something that for the few extra dollars, to me, it's always been worth having it to everybody in town. Sandy has offered, or is looking at cutting that one back to what is a forty eight page?
Yeah, I got the price lightened this afternoon. If we can get it down to forty eight pages, I think we can, and that would be fifteen sixty five. So it's a good savings.
Is that from Rutland Printing, the fifteen sixty five?
Fifteen sixty five and that would, I think between that and the postage, we should be able to stay within budget. And I don't think we would lose anything people are gonna worry about.
I like the price for Rutland Printing better, they've been doing it for, it looks like over a decade. And they don't have those setup costs that Rebo brackets does. So my, my choice would be to go with Rutland Printing. For that reason.
That would be my choice, the other one has that, uh, the setup fee of eighty dollars an hour.
An hour.
And if they only spend an hour and a half, they're gonna surpass the other bid price.
Exactly, exactly.
I think probably going with that pre-buy with the Rutland Printing is probably our best out.
I think so too.
And we, we would, uh, prepay the paper. We could prepay the paper, that way they'd order the paper.
Or we can, I would say let's do it because with the way prices are going with paper.
Yep, and, and there's gonna be a shortage come January, so.
No, that's gonna be fun for school, yeah.
Yep.
I think we have consensus on that then.
Okay.
The employee health benefit insurance. Currently with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and we currently have, I believe it's a platinum band plan. Sandy provided us with some numbers, uh, basically from what we paid per month last year to what the current year would bring, uh, is a drop of two thousand one hundred and sixty six dollars. We had a couple of things that she explained what happened. We have more single people on the plan and less people with dependents on the plan. I personally would like to keep the insurance the way we currently have it.
Which, which plan do we use?
Anybody who has different ideas.
Which, which plan do we currently use?
Platinum.
The, um, the bronze, did you say, I didn't, I didn't hear.
Well, there was a platinum down in the.
The platinum?
Yeah, down below in, uh.
Oh, okay.
The regular plans.
And, and do you say that the price for this is going down two thousand?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean.
It's not necessarily the price, it's just the cost because we've got.
Right.
Single people now.
Gotcha, and that's, is that two thousand per person or two thousand overall?
The rates are going down six percent.
Okay.
What, in your memo, it shows you what our monthly bill was in January of, sorry, twenty one?
Yes.
And you can see, uh, January twenty twenty two, it's gonna drop to over two thousand dollars.
Okay.
And it's for combined reasons of a six percent decrease in rates, but also, like Nelson said, more people using.
Because you're more single, yeah.
There's only, yeah, you know, our new employee is only single, so there's just only one employee with a dependent.
Okay. I mean, that sounds.
Huge savings from last year.
Yeah.
Consensus on that?
Yeah, I mean, we can maintain the same standard and the less money, I don't know for that.
Yeah, if you get the platinum plan, we got much less.
Opioid statement. I got a copy of this about a month ago. I've read it, I think, three times so far.
Yeah.
I am not aware of where Longford itself is actually financially lost in their own budgeting in our actual physical expenses. I think everybody in the state of Vermont has suffered from the opioid crisis. I don't think the intrinsic value of what all that damage has been done to the, our citizens in town and to everybody by this whole crisis. I don't think any amount of money in a settlement will help us recover that. Certainly if you had a loss in your family, a relative, a friend, to anybody, there is nothing that's going to recover that for you. I still don't understand, in here they get into cities of ten thousand people or more being really the important places that sign on to this, that would be Rutland. If you know anybody that's in the Rutland PD or the Rutland Rescue or the Fire Department, you're well aware of how much that city has been devastated.
Yeah.
Fortunately, we're one of the rural communities of Vermont that really haven't been hit that way. They have not specified what kind of money they're talking about. However, it is clear in here that the money that is available is mainly reparations for the damages done. Um, they also are looking for a large number of towns to participate.
Yeah.
I almost think at this point, if we sign on as a participant, it may well help in the distribution of funds to Vermont. Even if we do not recover any actual funds of our own.
Right.
And honestly, I don't see with a population of two thousand people, that there's gonna be any great allotment of funds to this town. I, I think probably this should be one of those that we all agree that if we sign on to it, we're not looking for funding from it, we don't expect funding from it. But we wanna help the major problem that's occurred within this state.
Yeah.
Are we in agreement with that?
If this will help the state, I think definitely we should sign on as a participant.
Rose?
I'm thinking.
Thinking.
I'd say as long as it's something simple and that Sandy doesn't have to do an hour's worth of paperwork to decide on it or whatever.
Good point, okay then, I'm in agreement.
So we're good? Consensus is gonna add paperwork to you because there are a number, number of forms that are gonna come in the mail that we have to respond to. Down to the RRPC and the tax appointments. Also, I've put Diane Baker's, uh, letter of resignation. I received it by email, I'm not sure how the others on the board received it. Uh, I did email her, Diane back, thanking her for her years of commitment. I believe Sandy also issued a similar email to her, uh, indicating that too frequently volunteers are not recognized enough by their communities for the service that they have provided. And I deeply thanked her for the time that she has given to the town. And I deeply thank her for the time that she has given to the town over the years. But we do need to accept her resignation. We're consensus on that, Sandy. Please send her another letter.
I have a letter for everybody to sign.
Okay.
Does she give a reason for resigning?
No.
Uh, the RRPC and the tax appointments. Uh, currently Erica is the representative and Kent for Death is the alternate to both of these committees. Uh, basically, we just have to reappoint them or if there's discussion, somebody you think you'd like to appoint, I'll open to everybody's general opinion. Just, are we for reappointing or?
If they're willing to do it, I'm going to be the reappointer.
My consensus again. Comes the tax sale coming up. We have a half dozen different, they've already been advertised in the mail or in the paper rather, so they are out there in public. I don't think we need to read them aloud here, they, they are made public. Basically, we, we have in the past had a representative go to the tax sale. And if there was no, no bids on the property, our representative has basically handled that for the town. Rose, I know you've gone there once or twice.
More than that, but I'm willing to do it.
You're willing to do it?
With the consensus that the, the board tells me if they want to proceed with purchasing it or ignoring it. Because I know we, we didn't bid on or accepted one property one time.
We did want that one at the time.
Yeah. But if the board says to go ahead, if there's no bids, then to go ahead and, you know, we'll put the town name on it. But I just want to know what the thing is for the decision before we go. It's very interesting.
How, how does that work?
Yeah.
The lawyer will get each property. He will tell you exactly what the property is and everything. And then he'll start the bidding at a certain price. And then the people who are interested bid and the highest bidder will get the property. But you have to understand that the owner has one year to come forward and to pay that balance off and they can take, they can take the property back. But the person putting the bid in, their money is put into like an escrow or something. It does accumulate interest and they get that back as well.
But I guess my question is, if there's no bidders, does the town get the property for the, just the amount that the taxes are on? Or does the town have to turn around and bid for like, you know, $100,000 for the property?
No, just the basic, the very minimum.
It's what's due on it, am I correct?
Yeah.
Seeing it's what's due between, if it's in the fire district, you've got to include their taxes and lawyer fees and everything else. So there is a minimum bid. Nobody can go below it.
The bigger one that's always been a problem here is the, uh, the cynical way I think it is. And they're true of these properties that are tied up with negotiations with other government agencies. I wouldn't want to see us as a town get tied up in negotiations with that.
Well, if no one bids on it, you don't have to take it, right?
No, I don't think we do. Do we seem to, no, we do not have to take the property.
So we could with the cynical way one, we could just let it?
I think Wallingford Pond is the same people, I think.
What's that?
Are they?
Wallingford Pond.
Oh.
I think.
That, that's the property that we've had the problem with.
Yeah, cynical ways also, uh, the same people.
Oh, are they both problems?
We've had problems with them before. And we do not, we don't want to get involved.
I, I think probably my suggestion is we just have to go put down, enter a bid.
Yep.
I know one property, you don't even have to worry about that property.
Yeah.
Taken care of before.
The bank usually comes in.
Okay. Which one?
Are we in agreement, Rose will represent us and we're also.
What was that?
We're not going to.
Did you say the banks done coming?
We're not going to bid on anything.
There is one property that comes up all the time and.
Is it one of these two?
Yes, it's trapped, well, it's trapped.
It's trapped, okay.
I'm not concerned.
Okay. Okay.
We don't want to get involved in cynical way.
Okay.
Or whatever.
Down to select board concerns and comments.
I, I just had a question about, I know that we're prohibiting microphones tonight from at these meetings when they're recorded by PEG TV. We're not, we're prohibiting microphones. I just don't remember when we decided that and how we decided and why we decided it.
I don't think the ones that don't want microphones on their desk probably haven't changed their minds.
Okay.
The PEG TV representative was here and asked me about it. Personally, I've told him that I don't have a personal objection to it. But as long as there are board members that do have objections, I'm not going to change my decision.
Okay.
Under, under the law, they can pretty much do it if they wish.
Okay.
However, I do hope they respect the. I am half expecting a call from their management again, so.
Well, I appreciate the, the explanation, thank you. I just didn't, I didn't remember the decision or, so thank you, I appreciate it.
I have something. Back in October, we started getting, um, in an issue about the erosion problem at Elfin Lake.
Uh huh.
And we've had a lot of emails go back and forth. And we have never really discussed it at a meeting. And I would like to discuss it just to document how the board feels about it and what is going to be coming up. Um, I know that previously we discussed about, um, I think Phil and the other board members came up with an idea of, you know, the erosion and we're going to do, I can't remember, some polls or something?
Yeah, polls.
And, and some other things to kind of like combat that. And I know that recently that there was an email from Shannon Picklet stating that she had contacted somebody else in her agency that she works for. And a meeting was, or a site visit is scheduled for November 10th. And I don't remember, I think I remember that we told she, we were going to tell Shannon that she was not supposed to get involved anymore, that this was a kind of an issue that we had already settled. It was going to be done next spring, was it, Phil?
Yes.
And now we have this woman coming in from the Conservation Committee or, or agency, whatever Shannon works for. And it's scheduled for, like I said, November 10th. And I'm, I'm going to go down and see what was, what's going to be discussed. And I think Bruce also offered to go down. And my feelings is that this should never have been done because I feel that Shannon went behind our backs and took authority and without our permission. And I just kind of want it done that way. I mean, I, I just feel that we told her in the Conservation Committee that we had it all straightened out and we're going to do it. Now we have the state coming in. You know, Elfin Lake is just a small, small thing. It, it's been every year. And I think we've handled it pretty good without getting involved with the state. So that's my thing. I just want to know that I'm not, I don't know what the word is, happy with how this has been addressed. And I don't know what the other board members feel, but I just feel this is not the first time this has happened. Going behind our backs, so. Any comments or anything, let me know.
Thank you, Rose.
I'm concerned myself, Rose, I mean, to me Shannon has used her position within the state to go behind our backs.
It's not the first time. But it really.
Hopefully, the state just makes some good suggestions and it doesn't proceed to keep us a problem, so.
Well, I'm hoping for that, too. I'm sorry.
No, no, you, you were talking. Oh, okay, you go ahead.
Okay. I, I'm hoping for a good outcome, too. I know that when, when I walk up at the, um, lake, you can see that the sand that was trucked in is, has basically all eroded away. And I think dealing with what Phil is saying about putting in the logs and doing some things to keep that erosion down, I don't think the answer is adding more sand because the sand is just running into the lake and, and, and sitting there. So if we can come up with a solution with Phil that will keep the erosion down, I think we go with, with what we can deal with with that, is my thought.
We have a solution, we have a plan, Rose.
Yeah.
And Shannon has gone, used her, used her position within the state to bring down somebody from up here or wherever it is, and so.
Well, you and Rose are going to be there when they're visiting, right?
Yes, because I really want to know what, what is going on. I want to know what, I think her name is Amy. I, I'm not sure what Amy is going to suggest. But there's also pictures of other projects that were sent. And they, the projects were bigger. We've just got a small area, it's a small thing. And we've endured it for all these years. And I just felt that we had already made the decision. We told them not to get involved anymore. And then all of a sudden, Shannon has made arrangements with, I don't know if it's her boss or what, and got, and got, gone behind our back and didn't get permission. We are the governing body. It's not the first time Shannon has overstepped her boundaries, so. Well, all I got to say is, we'll see what happens on November. And she was, Amy can come up with.
Okay.
One step at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, now if anybody wants to talk, go ahead.
Do anybody else have input on anything that they're thinking about? Hearing none, we're on to other business. I would note that in our packet here, there is a, some paperwork from Advanced Tennis looking towards next year.
Yeah.
When they actually did the basketball court down here, I was talking with the, uh, the lady and her crew that were here doing it. She's been doing it for well over 20 years. And basically, the proposal they've come up with for next year pretty much aligns with what her discussion with myself was. Uh, it looks actually to me very reasonable. They're looking around about $6,100 to redo the surface of the court. She had commented that the cracking on the corner there hit up extremely well. And with the exception of the, uh, the, the surface itself showed some fungal growth, which she commented was not real severe. And at the time, I'd been asking her whether it was something we should look at immediately. And her reply was, no, it, it could go through the winter and probably next year, we should look at budgeting for it. And I think from what I see, this is probably what we should be doing. We're almost in the budget come another, I think we have one more meeting before budget time.
Nelson.
I'm, I'm not sure how long, do you think it was a time limit on, uh, reply on the $6,100?
He said it was good for all my share.
Yeah, okay.
It's amazing.
So I, I really don't think we need to take action tonight, but it is a good one to keep in mind for.
How do we usually, do we put this in the town budget as, as a line item? I just don't know how we usually budget for the town.
We'll probably wind up putting in like the recreation budget.
Gotcha.
Similar as we did with the basketball court and stuff. Only it's about $30,000 left.
Yes. Okay.
The, also, we have $2,310 that came back in highway supplemental income. You're familiar that basically we didn't get a normal allotment. And they apparently are sending this to us by monthly. My thought on this was that anybody's welcome to give their opinion. But we've been looking at sidewalks, this would be a good source of funding to put aside for sidewalks. And it might actually encourage the Prudential Committee to, to think about funding this also.
I think that's an excellent idea. And Bill and I went through the sidewalks and we prioritized on what needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah. Other than that, unless somebody else has business they think we should take up.
Yeah, do you want to do a site visit to West Hill Cemetery?
West Hill, you have work group up there?
You want to do a site visit up there? We're kind of at a in-house.
You, you told me you'd already been up there, did you?
Yes, I went up once.
Yeah. Would, would you care to go up on a site visit?
Sure.
Yeah, we have the lease too, Rose, do you?
Well, sure, we don't have to walk too far.
No, and Joseph would like to attend as well.
Okay.
And the surveyor, obviously the surveyor will be there. I think we should invite the common alderers, too.
Sure, we'll go with Bruce.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, you can come up with the date for us.
If I don't have any other case to go.
Or still. I guess there is one other thing I would like to mention. I saw in our paperwork, we have the traffic fine. We're still doing 100 hours a month with a sheriff. There are, I believe, five tickets on here that were zero dollars. Having been going to traffic court for 30 years, I'm still in the assumption that when they zero dollars and the ticket was written, that it was either dismissed or the officer that wrote the ticket gave the perpetrator a free ride. We're getting crap for our sheriff's contract. I've long said we're not doing this for the fine money. But when I see a report like this that comes in with this, this number of violations on US Route 7, one of the most traveled highways, and I've had documentation from the state on this, that this is one among the highest two-lane highway traffic roadways in the state of Vermont. When I sit in the little diner in the middle of town and I watch cars go under the stoplight at 35, 40 and more, I'm really concerned that we're not getting more, more traffic tickets written. I know that we've gone with the sheriff because they make personal contact. The state police are getting to be known for handling a lot of those calls by 21s, that means they do them by phone. A person calls in with a minor, break-in, something's been vandalized, they'll probably get an officer's case number on it and told that they can contact their insurance company, refer it back to that. Yes, I understand the state's busy and that's one of the reasons that we have the sheriff doing that type of thing, visiting those people. But you can't tell me that a police cruiser can drive up and down through Wallingford in the course of a day and not see a couple of speeding violations. It just doesn't happen. I did this for 30 years. I still drive and I can still tell when a car is coming out that four lane into the 45 zone and is still doing 70. And I think everybody sitting here has seen it.
Yes.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try one more time to talk with our county sheriff, David Fox, and see if he will start actually having his men spend time running some radar. I haven't seen a stationary radar set up on Main Street in Wallingford in more than a month.
Yeah, I have to say, I saw one last week, but where they park on Main Street, you could see them sitting there for, you know, half the length of the town, so people just slam the brakes on and-
Just down to Main Street, you'd get a lot of tickets if you could.
As a resident in the village on School Street, Michael and I, we walk every day, at least three times during our walk, we have some car passing us that makes our hair fly because it's going that fast down School Street.
We all know the violations are there. Hopefully Dave will sit down and listen that his men need to, need to run some radar in town. I really would rather not see a report like that again.
And when radar is run, people do start slowing down. Sometimes.
I would entertain a motion.
Are they giving any tickets out for illegally parking in front of Cumberland Farms? I have seen so many people parked there in violation of the sign, but I don't know if you give a ticket out for that or not.
Yes, there is a ticket for that, they're illegally posted. They are in our ordinance, it is an ordinance violation. And just curiously, anybody listening out there, an ordinance violation is $220 and two points on your driving record.
I mean, we're getting trucks and things and it does come.
I see tractor trailers there all the time.
I know.
Both sides. The northbound side has hash marks on the roadway.
Yes.
It has signs. You know, aside from going out and greeting each driver that parks there and talking with them, explaining why it's not safe to come out of those streets with traffic. I don't know what more we can do without actually issuing tickets.
Because I know you have to ease your way off in Maple Street when you've got a big truck and you can't see what's coming north, it's really hard.
No, it's scary.
It is. But I'm just wondering if we could give tickets, why?
Oh, we can, we can give tickets.
You could get a lot of tickets there.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor of adjourn? All right.